Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the afternoon session of the Winchester City Council Planning, 22nd of October 2020. We are just about to start with Item 12 on the agenda, but before we do that, Dave Shaw will call the roll call of members to ensure that we're all here and tell us which officers are in attendance.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. First of all, councillor Clea.
Present.
Thank you, councillor Evans.
I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Present.
Councillor Laming.
Present.
Councillor McLean.
Present.
Councillor Reed.
Present.
Councillor Raffel.
Present.
And councillor Rutter.
Present.
Thank you. And for the officers, we have Julie Pinnock, Service Lead, Built Environment; Fiona Sutherland, Public Law Manager; and for Item 12, Prospect House, Megan Osborne; and then for Item 13, 18 Dean Lane, Catherine Watson; and for Item 14, Mountview, Verity Murphy. I'm David Shaw from Democratic Services, and I'm in the St Giles Room in the city offices, and I'm supported this afternoon by Matthew Watson in the Mill Room, also from Democratic Services. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dave. So we move to Agenda Item 12, 20/00324FUR, which is the erection of a one-three-bed dwelling, including new stairs, to old station approach, Prospect House, 15... Is it Maudlin or Magdalen? I don't know how to say that word. No one's correcting me, but anyway, 15 Magdalen Maudlin Hill.
Maudlin.
Maudlin.
Thank you.
Excellent.
The case officer is Megan Osborne, and we'll just give Megan a moment to get her presentation on screen. And Megan, when you're ready, please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. The proposal site is located off Bridge Street at the start of Magdalen Hill. It is accessed from a footpath that serves St Giles' Hill beyond. That's the footpath here. There is a number of listed buildings surrounding the site, and it's within Winchester Conservation Area. The existing house on the site was once the Station Masters Cottage, which was used in conjunction with the old railway station at St Giles' Street. To the south of the site, there were a number of trees on the bank between the site and the multi-story car park beyond. These have now been removed, with consent, to allow light into the site. A previous application on the site was to remove the existing dwelling and replace it by four dwellings. This was refused for a number of reasons. These are set out in my report. The main one is that the demolition of the existing building would not be acceptable as it's considered to be an undesignated historical asset, and the proposed buildings would fail to respond positively to the local environment. This is the front elevation of the proposal that was refused. Sorry, just having a technical difficulty with the presentation that's going to start in a minute. Okay. There we go.
Yes, carry on, carry on. I was just beginning to wonder whether my decision has gone down, but it was just...
It was ours, it was ours, it's back now.
But carry on, Megan.
Thank you. This application, this is the proposal in front of you here, is to keep the existing dwelling on the site and erect a three-bedroom dwelling to the side of the garden to the west. Parking for the dwelling would be located down the steps to the rear of the site, down here. And this is the multi-story car park beyond. This shows a comparison of the one at the top right-hand side of the corner of your screen is the proposal that was refused for the four dwellings. And then this one is the proposed application that's present in front of you for new dwelling and keeping the Station Masters house. This shows the elevations of the new dwelling. There are windows on the side elevation of the property. These are both the bathrooms, so have been conditioned to be obscurely glazed. This is Condition 12. And Condition 11 removes the rights for any further dwellings on the side elevations of this property. This shows the floor plans of the proposed property. And this shows the street scene of the proposed property, looking at the dwelling. So on the left is the Station Masters dwelling remaining, and the proposal here. Amended plans were submitted to move the property away from the existing Station Masters Cottage a bit further to have a larger gap between the two dwellings. The outline, as you can see here, is the application that was refused for the four dwellings. This is the rear of the site, so the existing Station Masters Cottage here, and then a proposed dwelling to the side of it there. On this plan, the trees were shown, but subsequently to that, the trees have been removed, and the sycamore tree is remaining on the site. Just going to take you through some photos. So the right-hand side is without the trees, so this one sycamore tree remaining on the site, and the rest have all been removed along this. And this is a photo previous to that, slightly different angle, and the bank leading up to the property, and all these trees have now been removed. Again, you can see the difference. So this is the Station Masters Cottage now, and you can see it where the trees have been removed. And these were given consent to be removed, and the sycamore tree is to remain. And this was previous, and you couldn't see the dwelling at all. Again, a view of the back of Station Masters Cottage without the trees. And this is standing in the site, looking towards properties to the side at Kiln Pike Court. And the one on the left is the one where it has existing trees, and this one has just a little glimpse of the sycamore tree that's remaining on the site. The proposed dwelling would be to the right-hand side of this screen, the right photo. And this is looking back, so I'm standing approximately where the dwelling would be, looking back towards the multi-story car park beyond, and the sycamore tree that's remaining on the site. And again, a slightly different angle than the multi-story car park there. And then looking up towards the multi-story car park is on my right on this right-hand side photo. And the remaining sycamore tree here, there's Prospect House. You can see that, and the new dwelling would be positioned here. This is a view from the front of the dwelling, so the existing wall fronting Prospect House, running along the footpath that goes up to St Giles' Hill. This is the existing Prospect House. And the photo to your left is shown within court, I think it's called, to the other side of that footpath. And again, sorry, this photo is quite dark on the right-hand side, this is looking at the front elevation. The proposal is for one dwelling within the side garden of the existing Station Masters Cottage. It's considered to be acceptable in form, design, and massing in relation to the surrounding conservation area and the existing building. Retaining the existing house is considered a much better solution to this site as it respects the existing asset, as well as providing a new home within central Winchester. Therefore, my recommendation is to approve, subject to the conditions as set out in my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Megan. We have one public speaker, who is Chris Ward, who's the agent. So good afternoon, Mr. Ward. I know you're here. He'd like to turn your video on great, and when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairmen and councillors, and thank you. I'm Chris Ward of BJC Planning and the agent for the application. Naturally, I'm here to support the application and the recommendation. Some of you may recall that I spoke to you some 14 months ago when seeking to promote the previous application. Circumstances have changed hugely since then, not only in how we are now meeting, but also in the proposal before you. Megan has outlined the differences between the two schemes. The last application revealed to us the importance of Prospect House as a heritage asset, so that the applicants took this on board and totally changed their approach to the site. Work has been done internally to Prospect House to bring it back into use as a dwelling, and its future is now secure. The application relates to the side garden and simply proposes a single new three-bed house, as Megan has described. As for the slides, this is of a traditional design and sits alongside but below the roofline of Prospect House. Many would say this is an attractive addition to the hill. This is for their report and for Megan's introduction, and need to highlight only the following. The applicant has made the changes needed by the conservation officer, who is now happy with the scheme. The same changes satisfy the urban design officer, who also now has no objection. And there's no objection from the drainage engineer or from highways, and the tree officer no longer has any objection following the tree works, which were authorised back in September 2019, and the works which have now been undertaken. The landscape team also support the landscape proposed. Please note also that the City of Winchester Trust are especially supportive of the new scheme, as you will see on page 88. As with the previous proposal, there is a bag of mixed comments from the public, but all of the negative issues have been considered by officers who conclude that the scheme meets policy requirements and deserves support. The officer's report, paged 189091, goes through all the concerns raised previously and explains that these have now all been overcome. The key message is that this is a proposal which complies with planning policy. It will provide a new three-bedroom dwelling, and within a short walk of the town centre. And the details proposed overcome all the concerns raised. If members have any questions, and I'll be happy to try and answer these. I have just one comment to add, and that is that the presentation refers to the removal of trees. You should have seen on the photos that these have actually been copied down to ground level. So most of these will grow back and provide a lower cover of trees on the bank, which is the purpose for the works being done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ward, and perfectly timed. And there might be questions for you. Vice-Chairman will just check on chat as to whether there are any questions.
Yes, Chair, I have a question, if that's okay.
Councillor Rutter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Is the retaining wall going to be rebuilt at the bottom of the hill? It looked from the photographs as if it had come down.
I wasn't.
The previous wall was flint, and what's on the drawings is brick. So can you just tell me what sort of wall is going to be put there? And the other question I have is about the parking situation. So I know it's a very sustainable site, so it'd be lovely if the people who buy the house actually don't have a car, but that's a lot to ask these days. So am I right in thinking that their parking space will be at the bottom of that hillside with steps going up to the houses, but parking space at the bottom? Because it didn't look as if there was room for a parking space, really. Perhaps you could answer those questions, thank you.
I'll take those in order if I can. I think I'm now unmuted again. In terms of the walls, you mentioned retaining wall at the bottom of the hill. There should be no works at all to the retaining wall at the bottom of the hill, and there is a short length of brick wall which has been there for some time to actually retain the bank beneath the sycamore tree. So unless something has happened, I'm not aware of, that wall should be as it has been for many years, and we're not touching it. The controversial wall last time round was the works we were doing to the flint wall, which actually fronts Magdalen Hill. And this time, basically, there are far less works to that flint wall, and that we are just making one additional hole to it. So crudely, each property has their own access through that flint wall. The new house will actually keep the existing gateway. I hope that answers that question.
Sorry, I'm looking at page 108 of our documents. And the photograph on the right, the one on the left... And then the photo on the right shows the bank with the sycamore tree. Oh, I see there's a bit of wall. It just looks as if we need more retaining wall. Otherwise, that hillside looks as if it's going to collapse down onto the road. Is that not planned?
The brief answer to that is no, we hadn't planned to introduce anything there. The original plan showed two parking spaces, and to accommodate two parking spaces, there was going to be a need to cut back into that bank and add a retaining wall to that utility building or whatever it is next to the barrier. But on tree advice to crudely to stay away from the roots of the sycamore tree, we've now deleted that parking space and deleted the retaining wall that went with it. So the original plans did show the excavation of part of the bank and a retaining wall, and that's now been taken out. As far as I know, no one has ever raised any issues about the stability of the bank there, so I wasn't aware of any suggestion of needing to retain what exists at the moment.
Oh, okay, well, I'll leave that with the experts. And the other thing is, it looks as if there's double yellow lines along there, so how are you going to be able to park there?
Well, it is a private access road, actually under the ownership of the applicants, but yes, they at the moment discourage people parking along there, obviously, because if they did, then it would restrict the width. And hence why, to create a space further on, we will be moving into the bank slightly to create that space. But it is a private access road that goes through to a small car park at the back and at ground level, behind the multi-story car park, and indeed the entrance to the old railway tunnel. Sorry.
Sorry. So will there then be a new retaining wall to allow that parking space?
There will be a... Sorry, yes, there will be a low retaining wall around the one remaining parking space.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of your broader question about car parking, then yes, there will be one parking space, kind of in the far distance almost of that photo. And there will be a flight of steps up the bank that provide access to it. The alternative is people can actually walk around to that space, as indeed anybody wanting to park in the multi-story to Prospect House would need to do now. And there's a technical note from a highway point of view submitted that says that's a 160-metre walk from anybody who actually wants to go down Magdalen Hill, around Bridge Street, and then back up Station Approach.
Thank you. Actually, I've had another look at page 107. It definitely looks as if there's a retaining wall all along there to the utility buildings. So...
No, I apologise, because the drawings you've actually got in your presentation pack are from going back to February of this year, so they have now been superseded by a later set of drawings. They are very much the same, but one of the significant changes is that those drawings were drawn when there were two parking spaces proposed, and then there's now only one parking space proposed. So there is a new version of that drawing. And effectively, the retaining wall to the right of the steps would still be proposed, but the retaining wall to the left of the steps has been deleted.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
But well spotted, councillor Rutter. I had a quick look at chat, I couldn't see anything while you were asking your questions. Is that correct, that there's no other councillor wanting to ask?
No other indications, Chair, not even councillor Reed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
If you could turn your camera and your mic off, but you're of course welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or longer if you wish.
I'm still here, by the way.
Back to Megan, anything that you want to update or something?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to update you that the pack that you've got, the committee agenda, the plans on it have actually changed slightly in that the site plan that you have showed two parking spaces. I did put it on the update sheet, written down, but just to clarify, the plan that you've got in front of you shows two parking spaces to the rear, yet the amended plan has only got one parking space to the rear, which I think Mr. Ward alluded to anyway. Thank you.
Yes, we've all seen, if you haven't, then just remember that there is a detail about the reduction of parking spaces on our update sheet, thank you. And I think that was it, wasn't it, Megan? So, members' questions? Shall we look at Principles of Development and Impact on Character Barrier and Neighbouring Property, which is at page 89 and 90, first of all?
No questions, Chair.
No. Thank you. So then, the rest of the report, which is landscape and trees, highways, parking and drainage, archaeology, nitrates, and anything else, including the conditions that people want to flag up.
I just have a question about the retaining wall, if I may. Sorry, Chair. It's just that, looking at the photographs and knowing the area, and even if there's a retaining wall put behind a bit of car parking cut out of the bank, just for one space, I do think that we probably should ask for a retaining wall along there, just to ensure that it doesn't fall down. But I'd like to hear the professional advice of our officer. Thank you.
Thank you. In the plans that I have, it shows a retaining wall, but Mr. Ward said that there was an updated plan, which I might have overlooked. But if you require a retaining wall, then that would be something that I'm sure they'd be able to do. It's not something that we would require or definitely need there. But I think if you'd like it put in, then that's fine.
What is your concern, councillor Rutter, that the bank might come down?
Having lived in a house at the top of a steep hill in the past in Yorkshire, I know how important retaining walls are. And particularly since a lot of vegetation is now gone from that hillside, although I understand that it's copped rather than taken away. Nevertheless, I think I just would like to hear from a professional, or perhaps we could ask the developer just to double-check with whoever, some sort of construction engineering type person who knows about these things, whether it would be a good idea. I'm just anxious that we shouldn't have any sort of round slippage in that area.
No, I understand your concerns. I'm not too sure how we're going to progress from here, though, because we're wanting expert advice as to whether a wall is needed or not, retaining wall is needed or not.
Councillor McLean would like to make a contribution as well.
Is it on the wall, councillor McLean?
Well, it's a contribution, Chair. I'm just looking at the bank and looking at the age of the tree, and possibly the age of the bank, and I'm wondering to myself, does it really need a huge retaining wall putting in? With X amount of soil and whatever to shore up the wall?
I don't think I...
It just seems to me, if the tree is, what, probably the best part is 60 years old, that bank's not moved very far. Just a thought.
I think I was thinking of a continuation of the existing wall you can see in the distance on that photograph.
Is it necessary, councillor Rutter?
Well, I did.
The bank is on chalk, it's been there for some considerable time, and appears, I'm not an expert, but appears to be very stable. Why put the developer to more expense? Thank you.
It's just that it was on the original plans, that's all. That's why I queried it, but thank you.
It's not on these, though.
Julie, did you want to come in?
Yes, please, thank you, Chair. I just thought, I was looking through the conditions, and I actually think that Conditions 3 and 4, we can adequately cover those by that condition. I think we've heard what you've said, and obviously think there's a little bit of ambiguity as to what I think the case officer thought and what the agent thought, and I'm sure we can iron that out between us. Condition 4 requires details of any boundary treatments, and I think we can certainly say that's a boundary, and we'll agree whether that needs to be a retaining wall there or not. And if you delegate that to your officers to discharge that as part of this condition, I'm sure we can resolve that for members, Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, councillor Rutter. Thank you very much. When you've got time to look at chat, is there any other questions from members?
No other questions, Chair, thank you.
So we'll move into debate? Any contributions to debate?
I have a contribution.
Carry on.
Thank you. I would just like to commend the application. I think it's particularly... Well, I mean, the other one was refused with good reason, but I think that this is a very sympathetic design and solves the issue, and it will be an attractive addition to the streetscape. So I would like to commend it and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to commend it as well, and even the Winchester Trust has commended it. And I don't often see that. It is nice to see the retaining of the historic interest in the Station Masters Cottage, and it provides a lovely little house in the centre of Winchester, in a very sustainable position. And I think all around, the best solution has been arrived for. So thank you for the applicant and the agent for being flexible and bringing this forward.
We have councillor Clea for debates, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Clea. More or less of what's just been said, Chair, thank you. But I thoroughly agree with the City of Winchester Trust regarding a very thoughtful revision of plans for this site. And as far as I'm concerned, I think it will sit there very well indeed. Thank you, Chair.
So there being... Oh, Mike, councillor Reed, did you want to contribute?
I wish you wouldn't quite say it in that tone. Sorry. Yes, I think it fits in lovely. The only thing in my view that it could do with is a chimney, whether it be functional or ornamental, it would really fit into place. With regard to the landscaping and the removal of the trees, I did have a, and I wrote a note, to say removal of the trees on such a steep bank may cause problems, but was delighted to hear from the agent that they'd been copped. So the root system which will hold that bank together is still there. So the chances of it dislodging are much reduced. I had no problems going along with granting the permissions.
Thank you. Is that it, Vice-Chair?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. So we will move to the vote. This application has been recommended for approval. We've noted the update sheet of parking places. And so Dave will call the roll, and do whether we agree with the recommendation to approve.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Councillor Clea?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Laming?
Four.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Raffel?
Four.
And councillor Rutter?
Four.
So that's all eight members in favour, Chair.
Thank you. So that application is approved.
Thank you.
We move on to Agenda Item 13. Do we need a break to swap over case officers and...
Chair, yes, we do. And I don't think the public speaker is registered yet either for this item.
Sorry, there was a lot of rustling. Who's not ready?
The public speaker.
All right, what time do you have?
The Mark Senat is not in the meeting yet, so if you could just give me a couple of seconds, I will give him the call. Thank you.
Are we having a brief break, Chair?
So people are clear, in case they need to leave their rooms. We will have a five-minute break, so it's 2.30, so 2.35 we hope to be starting, providing the member of the public is there.
Thank you.
To run a brief roll call after our break? I will start that now then. Councillor Clea?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Evans?
Present.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Present.
Councillor... Councillor Laming?
Present.
Councillor McLean?
Present.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Councillor Rafell?
Present.
And councillor Rutter?
Present.
Thank you. That's all members in the meeting. The Member of the Republic's in the meeting and the case officer is, is with me in the St Giles room as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So we move now on to agenda item thirteen, which is twenty stroke oh oh eight eight six stroke F U L. And then there's an application reference number eighteen stroke oh one six two oh stroke F U L. And then there's a date of decision, which was in November two thousand and eighteen. And this application is to vary the approved plans to show alterations to the elevations and floor plans of the approved dwellings. So it's retrospective, I believe. And it's eighteen Dean Lane in Winchester. The case officer is Cat Watson. Good afternoon, Cat.
Good afternoon, Chair.
So when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So the application is for, is retrospective for varying, varying the approved plans condition to take into account some elevational changes and a change in the footprint at the rear of the two properties. The site is on Dean Lane, which is within the settlement boundary of Winchester Town. And here we see the elevations that have been approved. So this is house one. And you can see the, the top picture that shows the front elevation. And then we've got, to the left, we've got the side, one of the side elevations, that be the right hand side elevation. Then to the bottom, we've got the other left hand elevation. And to the rear, we've got the, the rear elevation. And you may be able to make out there's two story turrets on either gables, which provide bedroom and living accommodation. Here's house two. So similar, similar materials, similar form, a little bit lower. So again, at the top, we've got the front elevation. Left hand side, we've got the, the side elevation, which is, then at the bottom, we've got the other side elevation. And at the rear again, we have the, the two story turrets with the windows directed away from, from the boundary. And then the floor plans as approved, so the top set of floor plans, we've got the ground and top floor for house one. And the bottom set of plans, it's the ground and first floor for plot two. So here are the elevations as built. So there are a number of minor elevational changes. So this is house one. So in, in particular, we've got at the, the top of the pictures, we've got the rear elevation. And of the, the two turrets, the two story turrets, they've actually now just on the first floor and they don't proceed down to ground floor level. So if we look at the left hand picture, you will see where the, the sort of the turret, remains of the turret are. And then instead of a ground floor turret, we've just got French doors, sliding doors leading out into the garden. There are, the, the windows within the first floor turrets are smaller than on what has been approved. There are a number of other changes as well. So to the front elevation, which is on the right hand side here, we've got some, the windows are smaller and we don't have the glazed window lights above the garage door. And then on the other side elevation, we've got a couple of roof lights that have been installed. House two, similarly, we've got the, the turret, turrets cut off at ground floor level. So they just extend on the first floor, again, replacing those turrets with sliding doors and the, the small size of the windows now. At the front elevation, which is the topmost one, again, we've had some changes in the fenestration. So the, the windows again have been made slightly smaller. The, the left hand side elevation, which is to the left here, again, we've got, we've got a number of roof lights. Those have been reduced in number from what's been approved. And then to the right hand side, again, we've got a couple of roof lights there. And then here's the floor plans. So the only thing about the floor plan has changed is the removal of the ground floor part of the turrets. So that reduces the floor plan at that level. But of course, still having those at first floor level and the same with house two. And then here we have some photos. So the left hand photo, that's a view from Dean Lane, looking towards the two houses here. The, the right hand photo is a view at the rear of the property. So we've got the turret here, you can see how it extends from the building at first floor level, but at ground floor level, we've got the sliding doors instead. And then some views to the rear, looking out from the rear of the properties towards the neighbouring properties behind. So you'll just see on this right hand photograph, you can see the gable of, and part of the roof of the property immediately to the rear. And again, this is just to show on the left hand side, the, the level of the boundary treatment with the mature shrubbery and hedges and trees, which provide a level of screening. And that ends the presentation. My recommendation is to permit in line with a set out in my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we'll move first of all to public speaking. We just have one public speaker, who is Mark Senate, who is the agent, obviously a supporter. Good afternoon, Mr Senate.
Hello, hopefully you can hear me and see me.
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Technology works, great. Thank you much, Lam, the opportunity to speak to you today. Your office has obviously gone through the changes to the scheme. I think changes certainly don't detract from proposals. And, and as Bill, it's clearly a high quality development. The main alteration is the creation, I suppose, of the hanging turret to the rear by removing the ground floor elements. That's largely away from the public domain and will hardly be seen by anyone. And we note from file that I think there are quite a few objections with regard to potential for overlooking to the property to the rear. The distance between the two dwellings and the property to the rear is twenty two metres, which is, which is normally within the parameters of what's accepted in terms of potential for loss of privacy. The canted windows, canted windows are retained at first floor level. And we've got ground floor, French windows or sliding doors. However, as I say, the distance between properties is twenty two metres. The property to the rear is a single story building. And in the distance and the presence of boundary treatment intervening vegetation, it's clear there'll be no overlooking. So hopefully that will ensure that the schemes it sets work for your purposes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there might be some questions for you from the committee. I'm going to start. The, although the case officer has said that a lot of these alterations are minor, there seem to be quite a few of them. Why, why have they come in as retrospective at this stage?
Yeah, I can't actually answer that question because I've not had the conversation with the developer. I can only assume that as they've gone along, they felt that alterations would help the improve the quality of the building.
Thank you. Okay. Vice Chairman, any questions for Mr Senate, the agent?
None indicated on chat or hands. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So yes, I think that's it for you. So if you could just turn your mic and your video off and, but do please stay with us and listen to the debate. So we move officer. Cat, would you like to add anything that you'd like?
Thank you, Chair. No, I, other than, I know Mr Senate wasn't sure about why the number of changes had been made. I met the applicant on site a number of weeks ago. And it was, as Mr Senate said, that as they were building out the development, in terms of positioning of windows and so on, and it became apparent that, you know, they, that they didn't work quite as well as, in those positions as they thought they might do. And I think in terms of the, the rear turrets, I think perhaps it was, it was, I think it was just to, to improve the usability of the, of the space. But no, nothing further to add. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So we'll move to questions from members. And shall we look at all of it? Because it's just actually, just two, two to three sheets. So questions on any of the paragraph headings?
We have councillor McLean, Chair.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Another retrospective application. Somebody doesn't like the plans they originally draw, drew up, then decides to change them without talking to the planning authority. I mean, there are no planning grounds, I guess, to, to argue what's going on here. But, you know, here we are again. If we serve no purpose, I, I'm just at a loss. You know, it's the second one we've had today. Third one. Help, help me.
Is it a planning reason to refuse?
That's what I'm really asking, I think.
But it's probably rhetorical question, isn't it? Because you probably know the answer.
I'd just like one of the officers to confirm it, please.
Cat, do you want to answer that? Or Julie?
Chairman, I think it'd probably help if I answered that for you. I think whilst I do understand it's frustrating, it's not a criminal offence to undertake any works without the benefit of planning permission. And in this case, you know, a retrospective application has been submitted to enable this committee to make a determination. And your job then is to assess whether the proposal is acceptable or not. And that's obviously what you're here doing today. I appreciate it's been done, but you know, you're, you're the decision maker and can make the determination on whether you think it complies with the development plan or not. Thank you, Chair.
Could I ask, Cat, about overlooking from, I think the property at the back is John Smart. But when we looked at the photographs, there seemed to be quite a substantial boundary hedge there. John Smart is a single story property, is it?
Yes, Chair. The boundary treatment insofar as it is within the boundary of eighteen Dean Lane, which is quite, quite a lot of it, is conditioned to be retained. And new hedging and boundary treatment to the sides and the, and the front will be, or is being, in the process of being installed at the moment. Particularly with the original application, the front of the property, there's quite a concern about the removal of the, the sort of quite verdant boundary treatment along there. And so our landscape architect did spend quite a lot of time trying to get a good scheme of native, native species hedging, which will of course take a little time to mature, but that's already in position at the moment. Thank you, Chair.
So you don't think there will be any overlooking
No, no, Chair. And in fact, the actual size, the, the size of the glazing in those first floor turrets has reduced significantly from what was approved. I don't think that'd be, because on the ground floor, because the French doors are set back from where the, the original glazing was going to be. I don't think there's any additional overlooking from that. I went on site and I couldn't see towards the neighbouring property from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just that there were ten representations and I don't know if they all mentioned that, but I just thought I'd check on that. Vice Chair, any other questions? Any other, yes, any other questions on the report?
No other questions, Chair, thank you.
So we're in debate. Debate? Could I start then? This is retrospective and I, you know, I have to say, it's very irritating that the, you know, you go through one process of developer and then they come in with all these changes. And it's very nice. It's a very nice development. I mean, I wouldn't mind living there myself, it's so attractive. But there was a, a development opposite, which looked like it was from the same developer. So having done the property opposite, surely the developer knows the rules that it's best to come in with one planning application. So I share councillor McLean's frustration at looking at retrospective. Having said that, there are no material reasons to refuse it. And in fact, I think they are a very nice addition to the street scene and to Dean. So what we've ended up with is a very nice, two very nicely designed houses. And I shall be voting to approve the application. Does anybody else want to say anything?
We have councillor Reed, we have councillor Laming and councillor McLean, please.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, like you, retrospective planning permission is a pain. However, we have to live with it. Makes you wonder sometimes why people do it. This is rather an interesting one, because the changes that have taken place to the lower part of the towers would have meant a substantial cantilever system being put in, in order to retain the weight above. So it's not a little thought, that one. And personally, I like the larger windows. I'm sorry to see them go, but I, like you, I can find no planning reason to refuse this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Laming?
Thank you, Chair. I like councillor Reed and McLean, who are really annoyed today about the number of retrospective applications we get coming in. This one was, has been planned for some time because it, like councillor Reed said, it takes a lot of effort and redesign to put in the cantilever construction. So there's not any real excuse for not coming to the council planning way before this particular time. And if I could find a planning reason against this, I probably would think about it. There's nothing that we can do. Pretty cross about this.
Thank you. We've only had two applications that have been retrospective today. And councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. That's two too many. At some point, there has to be something that allows retrospective applications to be policed properly. At the moment, we're being told always, there is nothing there that allows us to treat a retrospective application as it is. So I think when we're working on our plan, we need to start looking at this. Because if, if anybody who builds something then chooses to change it without talking to the planning authority, which is what's happening, why do we exist? I'm sorry, Chair, I'm just, like the other guys here, I'm furious at this, because it shows a complete and utter disregard and disrespect for the planning committees and the planning officers. Thank you.
Well, I think you'll find that when the white paper consultation is finished, there might be no consultation on some applications. If they, if it's in a growth area, they'll just build anyway, without even coming to committee. But we'll see. We'll see.
At least that would have a, would take away the blurring around the edges.
Okay. Vice Chair, anything?
No, no other debates, Chair, thank you.
Right, I've got my dog pestering me here to go out. Sorry, let's push him away. So this. So this, we're in the vote. This application has been recommended for approval. And in the usual fashion, we'll go to Dave and indicate whether you're for, against, or abstaining.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you again, Chair. Councillor Clea?
For.
Councillor Evans?
For.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
For.
Councillor Laming?
With great reluctance, for.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Against.
Councillor Reed?
For.
Councillor Raffel?
For.
And councillor Ritter?
For.
That's seven, four, I'm one against, Chair.
So this application is approved. Thank you very much. The last item, agenda, agenda item.
Excuse me, Chair, is it worthwhile you taking a break to let the poor little dog out?
No, he's all right.
Talk about David. That was funny.
Chair, the next item's scheduled for 3.30, as we inform the public speakers. So we're waiting for two to come into the meeting still, so I might have to just give them a call now, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Well, obviously then we'll need to take a break, won't we? I'm open to suggestions as to what break we try.
Should we try five minutes and see if David comes back with an answer?
Okay.
Well, not stick to our agenda, haven't we?
This is the last item on the agenda, yes, but we somehow have speeded up. Anyway, it's 14:56. Shall we try at five past three?
There've been let-ins from the lobby as well, so we are ready for the next item, Chair.
Okay, well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Obviously, I've got an echo on my voice, but anyway. And we move on to agenda item 14. Could I just ask the public speakers if you could turn off your microphones and your video cameras, because it does distort the sound for us. And then when you get, when I call upon you to speak, then please unmute and turn your camera off. So Mr. Blake More, could you turn your camera off? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. So agenda item 14. Case number 20/0071/FL. This is a revised highway report received on the 9th of June 2020, and it is change of use of existing highway verge to ancillary amenity land for Mount View Church Lane Sparshol. The case officer is Verity Murphy. And when you're ready, Verity, we're ready to hear the presentation. Thank you.
The application site is shown here on the location plan, on the satellite image, sorry. It is located within Sparshol Conservation Area. The surrounding area is semi-rural in character, and the site is joined by other residential The application site is shown in red on the location plan. It's located to the front of Mount View, which is a residential property, which is shown in the blue. The existing piece of land is a highways verge, and the extent of the highways' owned land in the area is shown in pink on this map. This is a photograph of the front of the residential property, Mount View, and the piece of land subject to the application is in front of it and in front of this hedge, and it's shown here. This top photograph is standing in Lamborn Close, looking north, and you can see the piece of land here. This bottom photograph is standing in Church Lane, looking southwards, and you can see the strip of land here. There are no proposed physical alterations with this application, and it is recommended for approval. That's the end of my committee, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Verity, before we go to the public speaking, oh, and we've taken the presentation off, the strip of land seems to go around the corner. Does it go around the corner as well?
Thank you, Chair. Let me just get back on to the presentation.
Yeah.
So you can see from this location plan the extent of the application site. So it is sort of in a linear, in a linear orientation. It doesn't bend all the way round to the corner, so it is just the piece of land in front of the application site and a tiny bit beyond that blue edge.
Thank you. Okay, so we have four public speakers, the first one being Mr. Blake More, and we've already seen you already, Mr. Blake More, so if you'd like to put your video camera on and unmute. Lovely. And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I object strongly to this application, as it is entirely misconceived for the following reasons. The land in question is a highway verge, even though grassed over, and is part of the highway with highway rights. A letter from Hampshire County Council of November 2011, referring to this same piece of land, says it has been part of the publicly maintainable highway for at least a century. The applicant has already illegally encroached onto the highway verge, regularly mowing the grass and inserting barriers to parking in complete defiance of section 137 of the Highways Act 1980, which makes this an offence liable to a fine. This has been a prolonged campaign to assert control and intimidate other residents from access. The planning officer's report not only supports this campaign, but goes further by envisaging planting on a highway providing a further obstruction to this existing highway. This is completely preposterous. Whoever heard of a licence for planting in a highway? In plain terms, you are being asked to grant a licence to contravene section 137. Added to that is contravention of section 130, which protects the rights of the public to the use and enjoyment of any highway. The problem is, you are being asked for a change of use when the land is already a highway and subject to highway rights. These highway rights conflict with a change of use, and you're being pulled in two directions. The only way out, open to you, is to require the highway rights to be extinguished first, and you escape the tangle of highway rights versus change of use. An application under section 116 of the Highways Act to the Magistrates' Court to extinguish the highway rights should precede this application. You only end up in a mess otherwise. I object strenuously to your considering this application whilst those highway rights are at force. The view of the Hampshire County Council Highways Engineers regarding highway safety issues is completely irrelevant. Unless the highway rights were first to be extinguished, the present lines of sight apply. Another troubling issue is that the land constitutes a public community in this conservation area. There should be no change to the status quo, except of course, the removal of the illegal barriers and a stop to the campaign of encroachment onto the highway. The applicant might argue that he's mowing the grass to keep the land tidy to the benefit of the community. He's doing this knowing he has no licence for it and without asking if this is what we want. In any case, if the residents want the grass mown, it will be mown by someone appointed to do it who does have a licence. To sum up, it makes no sense to proceed while highway rights exist. No support or encouragement should be given to interfere with highway rights while they exist by change of use, planting, or otherwise. Thank you, Chair. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Blake More. There might be some questions for you. I'm going to start off. Do people use that verge for parking?
No, they're not allowed to, because the barriers there prevent them from doing so. And the applicant has the attitude against parking there, and he has also intimidated people, walking their dogs over there even. So in other words, he's on this campaign to completely nullify the opportunity for the public to use that highway.
Why would anyone want to park there? Is that because they're going to the church, or?
Yes, indeed, they would want to park there for a number of reasons. Because they're going to the school, the roads inside, as I'm sure you're aware, are very narrow, parking is extremely restricted, and people would want to park there either to go to the school, or when there's a church wedding there, people want to park there. And there have been cases where people within the church have been dragged out of the church to move their car because of a bus going by.
Oh dear. Okay, thank you. Yes, I have visited the site. So Vice Chair, any more questions for Mr. Blake More?
Yes, we have questions from councillor McLean and councillor Clea.
Councillor McLean.
Good afternoon, Mr. Blake More. Parking on that plot of land, or the area of land we're discussing in front of the house, obviously someone has put dragon's teeth up to stop people parking on it, by the look of it. It's almost certainly the applicant. But if people were regularly parking on that grass in front of it, it would actually destroy it, especially during the winter. So I wonder, sorry, if I may just finish. So your thoughts on that? And you also mentioned something very, very worrying, which is intimidation by the applicant. Has that been reported to the police? Thank you.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
No, not to my knowledge. The reason why people might want to park there have already been explained. It is a highway. Admittedly, it might alter the character of that petite piece of land in the sense of the disturbance to the grass. There would be ways to mitigate that if you wanted to. There are ways of providing support structure to help prevent damage to grass, as I'm sure you're well aware, and this is something that's frequently done in areas which are grassed and used as a car park.
Thank you very much. Councillor Clea?
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask about the dragon's teeth. I know councillor McLean mentioned it. Mr. Blake More, may I ask, and you might not know, were the dragon's teeth put in by highways at the request of the owner, or did the owner just put them in?
To the, to the best of my knowledge, and I've been in the, living in Sparshol for 42 years, to the best of my knowledge, the applicant simply put them in. I'm quite sure that the council has not been responsible for those posts.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any further questions for Mr. Blake More?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blake More, for presenting your point of view to us this afternoon. If you could turn your camera and your microphone off, but of course, please stay with us. Thank you. The next speaker is the parish council representative, councillor John Little. Good afternoon, Mr. Little. Hello. Good afternoon. Did you want to turn your camera on?
I seem to be having some difficulty persuading my camera to go on.
Don't worry, we can hear you.
Okay.
It's up to you, but we can hear you, which is the main thing. So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay. I am John Little, representing Sparshol Council. We strongly object to this application to remove a public amenity and make it a private residential amenity, and we'd like to make five key points in that regard. The land is a public amenity to be protected. The land which is subject to the application is a highway verge and does not form part of the title of the property of Mount View, as recorded by the Land Registry. It fulfills a useful purpose in terms of safe pedestrian passage in the absence of footpaths, and is an important public visual amenity in a conservation area. It frames in part one of the two notable historic green space triangles highlighted in the village design statement. Second point is, there has been no conservation input. We note that Winchester's own heritage department have not been consulted on the impact of the proposed change of use in a conservation area. We would have expected to see a heritage report as part of due process. In the absence of any heritage input, the case officer concludes that the application does not contravene any policies, but then effectively contradicts this by seeking to condition the approval to prevent any development that would affect the visual amenity. This attempt to stop the use of the land compromising the policies seems a nonsense and makes it a development in name alone. My third point is that approving this application would lead to a loss of public amenity. A change of use with no actual physical development is a material development for the purposes of section 247 of the Town and Country Planning Act, to extinguish and stop up the highway rights and effectively claim ownership of what is believed to be unregistered land. This action deprives the community of a public amenity for a personal gain of the applicant. An approved planning application is a necessary, but is also a sufficient prerequisite for a section 247 application. The planning approval is therefore essential to the public amenity being transferred to a private amenity despite the officer's assurances. Importantly, a planning refusal means that the application under section 247 cannot be made, and so the public amenity would be conserved. My fourth point is that conditions will not protect the public amenity. If both the planning and the section 247 application were to prove successful, we have grave doubts that the conditions suggested could be sustained. They could be challenged and could be found to be unenforceable. The parish council have previously been advised by enforcement officers that conditions are too easily applied, but all too frequently cannot be enforced. Our experience bears this out. When planning condition breaches occur.
Chair, that's three minutes, Chair.
They are rarely enforced by Winchester. Further, the conditions I specified are weak and would allow changes that could destroy the fundamental green space character of the land.
Councillor Little, I have to stop you there, but there could be some questions for you from members of the committee.
Okay.
We have a question from councillor Laming, Chair. Sorry.
Councillor Laming.
Thank you. That is a very narrow piece of road as well. And if I remember correctly, the Sparshol bus comes up there from the college. So it must be awfully difficult trying to get a car going one way and the bus going the other, when you've got all those bollards and that in the front of the property. So there's a safety issue as well involved in this, is there not?
That's correct, and cars often have to dive around that particular triangle, particularly if there's large vehicles coming the other way.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions for councillor Little?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Little, for contributing.
Oh, I beg your pardon, councillor McLean has just come in.
Councillor McLean.
My little buttons not working. There we go. Thank you. I'm just on page 130. I'm just trying to get my head around how strong everybody feels on this. It says here, there is no physical change to the land, no boundaries or structures are proposed to be placed on it. Conditions two and three are attached to ensure this. We've just heard that the parish council is, shall we say, not a great fan of those conditions, but at the death, those conditions are there. Looking at the land, it's been very, very well maintained, which is obviously what the applicant wishes to carry on doing. We're also being told this piece of land is not identified in the village design statement as a key area of open space, nor designated under any local plan policies. I wonder, could the parish councillor, sorry, the parish councillor just expand a little bit on page 130, impact on the area, why he feels there's so much risk there?
Well, I think the concern is, and I think it seems to be recognised by the officer, that the visual amenity needs to be maintained, and the conditions are put there in order to. and the conditions are put there in order to do so. I think once the change of use has occurred and despite the conditions, our experience is that they will either come back and request for those to be changed and amended, and they will be typically, because it strikes me as crazy to say, I've applied for residential use, but the conditions don't allow me to use it as residential use. How crazy is that? And therefore, it will actually end up being converted into something else. A hedge will be put around it and the visual amenity will be lost. And there will be no means of anyone controlling it.
Thank you. Councillor Reed, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quickie. Were the parish council ever approached by the county council with regard to transfer of ownership on this piece of land?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions for councillor Little?
No further questions indicated, Chair.
So councillor Little, thank you very much for your contributions this afternoon. And if you could turn your microphone off, that would be great. And you haven't got your video on. And we'll move on to the ward councillor, councillor Horrall. Good afternoon, councillor Horrall. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you for allowing me to join the committee this afternoon.
And you have five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm asking the committee this afternoon to reject the application. The land in question is currently highways land, a grass verge that has been cultivated for the past 25 years that I've lived in the village. And I understand the applicant understood back in 2011 via solicitor's letter that to maintain the land, he should apply for a cultivation licence. To the best of my knowledge, this has never happened and is slightly surprising if his desire is cultivation. The triangles that have already been mentioned at either end of Home Lane are noted in the Sparschold village design statement and conservation area appraisal and are significant landmarks in our village. And this piece of land joins on to that, a butt sack triangle at the top of Home Lane. And that is why it is of note to the overall character for the area. Also, we don't have footpaths in Sparschold and therefore this piece of land is used to walk on on this narrow stretch of road as already indicated to you. The officer in her report has confirmed that allowing the land to become residential would enable residential permitted development rights and general permitted development. The conditions applied safeguards this, but as we all know, conditions are not forever. We have taken advice from the Department of Transport, I'm very happy to share that with you, Chair, and asked a very specific question. Could you please advise us if obtaining planning permission for a change of use from highway verge to residential amenity is sufficient to obtain a stopping order for the verge? They replied as follows. I can confirm a change of planning permission would still class as development for stopping up purposes. Therefore, you can apply to stop up the highway under section 247 of the Town and Country Planning Act by using your planning application, your planning permission, apologies. And although the planning officer agrees with this position and advises the parish that should such an application come forward, they would have the opportunity to raise concerns with the Secretary of State if such an action were taken. Why would we put ourselves in that position? The land has continued perfectly well for years. It has the posts, which we've talked about, along the edge to protect it and from cars driving over it. But what gain is there today from making this change? Why has the asset management team within Hampshire Highways not been consulted? I see no evidence of this. They were the team back in 2011 that actually set out the rules to extinguish the highways rights for this land by using an S116 of the Highways Act. Why are they not aware of the potential loss of this highways asset today? I suggest to you that the applicant knows that they need planning approval before they can actually step to the action on the section 247. Otherwise, what is the purpose of today's application? Why would we open the door to such an action? This is obviously a technical application using experienced ex-Winchester staff to find a route through that could allow the piece of land to be included in the Mountview property potential redevelopment. Why would we support the opportunity for public amenity land to be gifted as private land to a resident and potentially allow the land within the heart of the conservation area to fundamentally change in the future? I know these are all opportunities and potential issues, but they are real. If the applicant really does not want to change the land, why is he doing this? Nothing has happened in the recent past to actually make any necessary changes. Why is he seeking permission to develop? Because he has a longer term goal. Committee, I urge you to reject this application. It is contrary to the VDS, contrary to the conservation area appraisal, where it would erode the character of a very important area in the village and mean that the land is no longer public amenity land. Committee, this is really important for our village and a matter of very considerable concern. Thank you for your time, Chair, and allowing me to address you all this afternoon.
Thank you, councillor Horrall. And as you know, there might be questions for you. I'm just going to start. Could you just run past me again your advice that you had from the Department of Transport about stopping up the highways? Because I got a bit lost there.
Chair, of course. So we actually wrote to the Department of Transport and very happy to share the correspondence with you formally. We asked them a very specific question. Could they advise us if obtaining planning permission, which is what is obviously being asked of you today, for a change of use from highway verge to residential amenity is sufficient to obtain a stopping up order for the verge? And that is the step that needs to be taken if you give permission today for then the applicant to go on and actually change the verge in the future. And they replied to us very formally and gave us the paperwork if we wanted to do it. Not that we did, of course. But I can, and they say, I can confirm a change of use of planning permission would still class as development for stopping up purposes. Therefore, you can apply to stop up the highway under section 247 of the Town and Country Planning Act by using your planning permission. So what you would do today, you would give a segue by giving permission by changing the use of this land to the applicant to then take the next step, which we are anticipating, where the applicant is saying they wouldn't, but it would be available to the applicant or indeed a future owner, for them to then actually change that piece of land. And the photographs that Verity very kindly showed showed you the proximity to the triangle. And those two triangles are very historic pieces in the conservation area appraisal at the top and bottom of Home Lane. And this piece of grass has a sort of a small piece of road, barely enough width for a car to go through, and the verge is on the other side. So that whole piece, that whole feature is a really important part of the village. And so we're really concerned that we don't have a change of use that would allow potentially in the future something else to happen there. And as you say, it's gone on beautifully mowed, nothing happening to it for years. And so we don't really understand what the merit of this application is, if that is the true essence of the applicant's view. Thank you, Chair. Very happy to send you that documentation if it would help you.
Thank you. And stopping up the highway means?
That they.
I'm sure I understand what that means.
That then the applicant would be able to make further changes to that land. And even though you might support today the conditions, they could actually bring that land into their property and actually say, well, actually, we're going to put a hedge round it or we're going to put a garage on it or make it part of our garden. So that would actually then could be absorbed. And you saw the extent of it on the map, again kindly presented by the officer, that shows that it's actually quite a considerable piece of land at the front of the property. So it's meaningful to them and that could then be absorbed into that part of the property. So there are, if it were to stay exactly as is, that would be fine. But by you considering this application today and approving it, you allow other things to potentially take place that would be, in our view, fundamentally wrong for the conservation area as it is currently articulated. Thank you, Chair.
Got it. Thank you very much, councillor Horrall. That was very informative. Vice Chair, any more questions?
Yes, we have a question from councillor Leaming, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Leaming.
Good afternoon, councillor Horrall. With your normal efficiency, I presume you've spoken to Hampshire County Council because as I understand it, all the land between curtilages is owned by them right across the road. Are they taking an attitude that they might lose some of their land?
Good afternoon, councillor Leaming. Well, my understanding is that the asset management team that is responsible, and I've double checked, in fact this morning with Hampshire County Council, that they are in existence and it is their role to have the schedule of land that is highways land, have not been consulted on this. So I'm not sure that they are aware that there's a potential move. And in essence, I suppose, it's rather strange that land can just be acquired free of charges, it were, potentially by this route that currently is a highways piece of land and is used, as you can see very clearly from the photographs, as a sort of a piece of amenity. People walk their dogs, they stay off the road and stay on the grass out of the way of traffic. But I'm not sure, based on the investigations I've been able to make, that they're aware of a potential loss of the highways asset, no.
Yeah, I mean, I do know that that is a very narrow road and will overtake you if you're going in the opposite direction to the bus.
Absolutely, the bus prevails.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Leaming. Vice Chair, any further questions for councillor Horrall?
Yes, we have councillor McLean, Chair.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Horrall, good afternoon. Looking at the photographs of the plot of land, it looks to be beautifully maintained. It's obviously regularly mowed, there's no ruts in it, it's not been dug up. On listening to the presentations, there seems to be, I've heard the word intimidate being used a few times here. So is there, you know, I don't think it's probably planning terms, but is there an undercurrent of something here that we're not, either I'm not picking up on or we're not being told about? Thank you, Chair.
This is not a planning issue, councillor.
I know, but I've heard it used three times in three different presentations, so people do believe it's planning.
Yeah, it's not for our decision making. Councillor Horrall.
Well, councillor McLean, I think the, you know, it is a well-appreciated piece of land. It is in good condition, as you saw from the photographs, which is why we don't understand, if that's been the case for tens of years, what is this application all about if it is not about some future activity? Because there is no reason, if it's been abused in some way and people are driving all over it, I could see some rationale for bringing some application forward. But none of that is in existence here. It's perfectly well kept, it's perfectly straightforward. And so we are concerned about what is the intent in the future. And if you approve this, you unlock that potential change. Right now, that can't happen if you leave it as it is. If it's just highways land and it's just left, it is perfectly acceptable to everyone, including the applicant as we understand it. I see no reason why we would change. I'm not using the words that fellow speakers have made, councillor McLean, but I do know there's quite a strong feeling about what the opportunity for the future might be should you decide to follow the officer's recommendation.
And if I may, just one further question. We heard one of the presentations talking about if the dragon's teeth weren't there, people could park on the grass when they were going to church. I think it was used by Mr Blakemore. That would then result in the land being spoiled. I wonder, again, could you just comment on that? How you would see that being protected to spoil a lovely piece of land?
And I see around the village in many places, people putting wooden bollards up, rather larger pieces of stone. One or two people have got these posts that come up that actually bend over if you hit them to try and prevent people driving on their verges and their banks etcetera around the village. And why is that? Because the village has, as you very well know, really narrow roads. So I actually think the posts on this piece of land keep it in very good condition and it does stop people driving on it, absolutely. And so, again, if that is the intent of the applicant, why would we do anything different than, other than just leave it as it is? The opening up of this application is the concern. So I think everyone is right, there's no parking in Sparschold, narrow lanes, so we all have to muddle along together. And so there are these various sort of individual ways of trying to protect the verges and edges. But I think the majority of people would say that is absolutely fine and reasonable.
Thank you.
We have councillor Reed, Chair now.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I just ask councillor Horrall, during your presentation, you said Mountview redevelopment. Is there something else that we should know?
Councillor Reed, there is no application on the table. But my question to the applicant was, why do you need to make this application today if you want to do nothing to the land? Because if the land is left entirely as it is, which everyone is happy with, including the applicant, what is the purpose? And the purpose is to then move forward with additional actions that could bring changes to that piece of land because they could then take it into the curtilage of the, into the Mountview residential property. And what I'm saying to you, I think I use the word gives an opportunity to, it gives them that option that doesn't exist today. And so we don't know, we have no idea what the current applicant or future applicants might, the future owners might do. But if you were not to approve this today, you take all that uncertainty away for everyone. And so it is just what the future might bring. And we all know that things change in the whole way that people think about properties and their views on applications and conditions as time passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reed.
Vice Chair, any more questions for councillor Horrall?
No further questions indicated.
Thank you very much, councillor Horrall.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So we have one final public speaker, Mr Colhain, who's the agent. Good afternoon, Mr Colhain.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We can't see you, but that's your choice, is it?
Let's have a look. Is the camera on now? Camera on? No.
No, we can't see you, but not to worry, we can hear you, which is the important thing. When you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Can I just, it does concern me a little bit about accusations of intimidation, completely unfounded, Chairman. That does worry me. Councillor Horrall very eloquently explained the procedure of a section 247 notice. And yes, there are two ways of going about an extinguishment of highway rights. That's section 116 of the Highways Act and section 247 of the Town and Country Planning Act. The 116 has to be applied to Hampshire County Council. There's a fee of £4,084 for that. £1,900 that has to be paid upfront. There's no guarantee that that would move forward. The second stage, if successful, then has to go to a magistrate's court. And unfortunately, because of COVID-19 at the moment, those court hearings have been suspended indefinitely. So the most suitable proposal to go for is a section 247. In order to do that, you have to have some form of development. The development in this case is the change of use of the land, the highway land, which we don't dispute as highway land, to residential amenity. amenity. If this application is successful, then we will move forward, the application under 247, to the, to the, to the highways agency. And it's then that the asset management team at Hampshire County Council will be consulted. The parish council, again, will have an opportunity to put their case to the, to the, to the highways agency. And, and all those concerns will be considered as part of the section 247. But the thing is, Chairman, I mean, it's, you can appreciate that this, this area of land has been meticulously maintained for the last 35 years. And it's slightly worrying that we have somebody that doesn't live in this road suggesting that this area of land should be used for car parking. Mr and Mrs Conroy, you know, do not want this land to be used as parking. That's why they've installed the dragon's teeth. That's why they want to take this area of land over and maintain it in perpetuity, in the comfort of knowing that they can control people, that they won't be parking on this lovely verge. There is no underlying scheme of doing any further developments. They're quite happy to have the conditions imposed on them, that there won't be any boundaries, any planting, any structures on there. And if you grant planning consent today, that planning consent will be valid to this area of land. If the section 247 is successful, then that land will be transferred to Mr and Mrs Conroy, but those planning conditions will still be enforced. If they want to do anything further to that land, they will have to then come back to Winchester City Council to seek planning consent. Hampshire County Council will be consulted. And you've already seen Hampshire are concerned that any structures on there will impede visibility. So there's no likelihood that any structures that impede visibility will actually be permitted. So there's no underlying, you know, scandal or anything here that needs to be addressed. They just want the comfort of being able to maintain that, that area of land in the way they've been doing for the last 35 years and have the comfort of knowing they can do that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. And thank you for explaining the procedure with the asset management team and Hampshire Highways. And questions for Mr Colhain?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Reed and councillor McLean. Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, Mr Colhain. Long time no here.
Hello.
Is it normal that land which is former, or possibly former highway land, is gifted to an individual resident?
I wouldn't say it's gifted. Normally, the, 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 the frontage owner owns up to the centre line of the carriageway to a spade's depth. And highway rights then exist over any land between his boundary and that centre line. So in this case, you know, yes, I mean, it is a bit of amenity land, but let's not get, get it too broad up in amenity. People don't sit here and have a picnic. You know, it's not a park or, or, you know, an open space. It's a bit of highway verge. Ordinarily, you say, if, if it wasn't highway, it would be his land anyway. But the fact is, historically, it is a bit of highway, but he has the, the ownership up to the centre line of the carriageway. So by applying for the extinguishment of highway rights, all that would happen is that bit of land would be reverting back to his title.
I'm with you. Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, but as this, there is an amenity element in it, would it not have been a course to go down through the parish council?
The parish council don't come into this. There are statutory consuls, that's all they are.
All right then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Nick. I hope it's a straightforward question. I think you've just said that they own, I think it's riparian, isn't it, out to the centre of the highway?
That's correct, yes.
And they own the land, is it own or have the maintenance rights of the land to a spade's depth?
So, so it's normally they have the ownership of spades depth, but the, the highway rights exist over that entire land between the centre line and the, and the site boundary.
So who, if I may, would have the rights to mow the lawn, the grass?
Well, so, so that's, 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 that's a, that's a very good question, because Hampshire County Council in rural areas only mow the grass once a year. Okay, you can apply for a licence to cultivate.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's something like, I don't know, £200 a time. You have to have £5 million public liability indemnity insurance. And it's funny that somebody mentioned that Mr and Mrs Conroy had been illegally maintaining this, where the parish council, in their objection, stated that Sparshol residents are encouraged by the parish council to maintain the verges and edges, and the vast majority do so. So the parish are actually encouraging people to break the law by their own, their own suggestion.
So if I can just finish off that question then. So I'm possibly missing something, but if they've already got the rights to maintain it out to, to a spade's depth.
They have the rights to maintain it.
Yeah. So why do they need something more to carry on doing what they've already got the rights for?
They, they don't have any rights to maintain anything at the moment. As I say, they haven't got a licence to cultivate. They have effectively been, been doing it illegally for the last 35 years. What they would like to do is formalise that situation and bring that into their ownership, so they can have the comfort of knowing that they can maintain that, you know, perfectly legally.
Okay. And with your experience, do you believe the conditions that we are setting are strong enough?
Well, I certainly think the conditions are, are strong enough, but it sounds like the, the parish council have no faith in your enforcement officers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Leaming. Thank you.
Councillor Leaming?
It strikes me that a large majority of people living in villages are breaking the law then by cutting their verges outside their house. This case really perplexes me, why they want to change the status quo, because the lawn looks nice, nobody's parking on it. I really cannot see why all this needs to change. And if they've got the rights over the land, they must be able to cut the grass. And if people were objecting to that, surely Hampshire would have been down on them like a tonne of bricks.
Well, they don't have any rights to mow the grass, as I said. They've, they've installed the dragon's teeth on public highway, and they've been there, for my knowledge, for 35 years. Now, I think that if the highway authority had had a problem with that, they would have got straight on to it. But as I say, they haven't, because they appreciate that their grass cutting only takes place once a year, whilst Mr and Mrs Conroy cut it, you know, throughout the year, and make it look nice and do the job for the highway authority. And as I say, all they want to do is be, have the comfort going forward in knowing they can do that without doing it illegally.
Mr Colhain, could I ask you a couple of questions?
Certainly, Chair.
If they've been doing illegally, as you say, maintaining the land for 35 years, why now? Why do they want to do something different now?
Well, why not now? And what, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't see why we need to justify why they want to put a planning permission for now. You know, they just formalised the situation.
Okay. And then I noticed from the maps that that verge actually goes around the corner. So how will that be marked off? Because they're not applying for all of the land which goes around the corner, are they? They're just applying for the bit in front of their property.
Yeah, that is correct, Chairman. There is no, there is no, going to be no delineation other than the dragon's teeth that are there already. It wouldn't surprise me, Chairman, that if, if this application was successful, and their, their application on the 247 notice was successful, that they, when they were cutting the grass, I expect they'd just divert their mower just around the corner and take that little bit as well.
Yeah, just, there's a bit sort of sticks out into Lambourn Close, which looks a bit odd. No, no, they, they, they are applying for that bit as well, aren't they?
They're only applying.
According to the map, they are. But then, but they're not in reality. The map is wrong, is it?
It's only.
Page 137. And the bit that's been marked out.
So it's only, only, the only bit in the crosshatching is part of the planning application, shall we?
Yeah. Okay. But there is a bit from the photos, there is a bit that goes around the corner.
Yes, there is, yes. And as I say, that doesn't pass the planning application. To say, I'm sure they would get the mower around and do that bit as well.
Okay, got it. Vice Chair, any more questions for Mr Colhain?
No more questions for Mr Colhain, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to hear you again.
Thank you very much.
We haven't had the pleasure of seeing you. Thank you very much. So Verity, any updates from you, having listened to the public?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to tell members that we can't take into account what might happen on the future, in the future on the site. We need to assess the case in front of us now as it is and on its own merits. Thank you, Chair.
Fiona, did you want to come in?
Chair, obviously, there's been a lot of talk about ownership of the land and the highway rights. Ownership is not material to your planning consideration today. And it's actually the case that the highway rights are not material planning considerations and would not be something which you could refuse planning permission for today. There is a process to follow should the applicant wish to have the highway rights extinguished. And actually, Mr Colhain's very eloquently explained what the options are. So I entirely agree with the set out. And in fact, that course basically is what the advice from the Department of Transport given to councillor Horrall was. There's no reason at all that the planning application should not be determined before other factors are considered. And in due course, if this application is successful, the applicant will have to look at the highway issues and obviously will also have to ensure that he's got the ownership rights to enable them to implement the change of use, subject to any conditions, if that's what they wish to do. Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to answer any other questions if you've got on those particular points.
Thank you. It's a very complicated issue, isn't it? I've never come across, but I think I've got it now. So we'll move on to members' questions. And I think there's short reports and questions on anything. Yeah, principal development, impact on the character of the area, highways, and anything else.
Yes, Chairman, if I may.
Yep, councillor Reed.
It may well have already been answered, but just to make sure that all the points have been covered. Mr Blakemore came out with a set of legal elements. Does our legal team agree with what he actually said at the talkroom?
Chair, I think the points that Mr Blakemore made related to the procedure to be followed under either the Highways Act to extinguish the highway or under the Town and Country Planning Act, slightly different processes. I don't think he actually, I'm not particularly aware that he's said anything else other than in relation to those particular legal points. Unless there's something I'm missing. But those were the issues that I'm aware of him raising, Chair.
Thank you.
And could I ask, Verity, why we, it says in the conservation area, isn't it? So one of the members of the public criticised the fact that there was no input from the conservation team.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So the site is within Sparshol Conservation Area. There's no physical change to the piece of land, and therefore I felt comfortable assessing the impact on the conservation area myself, using my professional judgement. And I don't think there is going to be any significant harm on the character or appearance of Sparshol Conservation Area. Thank you.
And I do have other questions, but I'll stand back in case there are any others.
I think you should go ahead, Chair, because nobody else has got questions.
Well, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask about the condition three, residential paraphernalia. I think I was, it was explained to me that sites were different, planning consent, so private land and keep off and whatever. But it was the statement residential paraphernalia that bothered me, because people like to put things on their property, wishing wells. And I'm not suggesting that the applicants want to put a wishing well, but you know what I mean. What would that prohibit? Would that prohibit what's already there, the dragon's teeth? Or, because it's lower than 60 centimetres, that's all right? I don't quite understand condition three.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So first of all, if I explain what we mean by residential paraphernalia. So that's the sort of personal items that you would expect to see in someone's residential curtilage. So like you said, sort of the wishing well sort of thing, you've got washing lines, you've got children's swings, benches, that sort of thing. So that would be prohibited on the site. The dragon's teeth are already there, and they have been for, for, I think, as the agent was saying, over 30 years. So they, they would stay there, they wouldn't need any permission for those. But anything else, any more dragon's teeth, any other means of enclosure or structures would be prohibited on that piece of land. So it would stay the same as it is at the moment and would look the same. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And what about a hedge, providing it was below 60 centimetres in height?
Thank you, Chair. So we've got that in condition three, but in condition two, we have restricted means of enclosure or boundary treatments. And I think a hedge would come, would come under those two things. So that wouldn't be allowed on the site without planning permission.
And could you just confirm the bit about signage, you know, putting bits up saying private land and no parking and?
Yes, a small sign might be acceptable under the advert regs, but that's under different legislation to, to the planning applications.
So that requires planning permission, separate planning?
It depends how big it is or, and sort of what, how, where it's going to be, where it's going to be put. But it, it might be deemed consent under the advert regs. But obviously, we would have to assess anything that came into us and give more, more guidance later on down the line. Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair, any further?
Yes, yes, Chair, we have councillor Leaming with a legal question and councillor McLean. Thank you.
Councillor Leaming?
Right, sorry, I had trouble getting the mic. Just a quick question. Would we be better off considering taking away development rights on this area, so they couldn't do anything? Or have we got sufficient coverage on what has been recommended?
Verity?
Thank you, Chair. We have got condition two, which removes visitor development rights on the, on that piece of land, for buildings, structures, walls, enclosures. And I think that's sufficient enough. And I think that that can be controlled through condition two. So I don't think there's a need to restrict anything else on the site. Thank you.
And councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. If we've, we've set a condition, just grab it quickly, talks about hedge heights and what's the condition number? Help me somewhere. No, I can't. Oh, here we go. Section three, it's one of the conditions. We're, we're setting conditions on, on doing something or not doing something, which is the height of a hedge. And then we're saying they've got to come for planning permission if they're going to decide to put a hedge in. So can you just sort of fill that one in for me a little bit? I think that's what we're saying.
Thank you, Chair. So condition three has been put on from a highway safety perspective. So from a highways point of view, anything over 60 centimetres in height would be, would be harmful to the, to the highway safety of that part of the road. Condition two comes in from a more planning point of view in terms of the visual harm of having planting. So I see what you mean, but I think having both of them on the permission is more robust. And we've got the highways reason for it, and we've also got the material planning reasons in terms of the visual harm on the conservation area, which is controlled under condition two. Thank you.
Going back, sorry, going back to councillor Leaming's point about taking permitted development rights off, would that not block that anyway?
Chairman, I think condition two is the removal of those permitted development rights. We're talking the same language. I just think that condition does that, Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, any further contributions?
Yes, actually, I've just got a question now, because I think that the conditions contradict one another. So condition three implies that you can plant a hedge so long as it's not more than 60 centimetres in height. But condition two says that you can't have any form of boundary treatment without planning permission. So I'm just wondering if, if, if it's just adding to confusion by having both of those there, or perhaps we just need to reword things.
Thank you, Chair. We can, we can remove the last line of condition three. We can remove the last line of condition three. So we just have that no residential paraphernalia shall be placed on the site and then take off or any planting to be undertaken, which will exceed 60 centimetres in height, if members would be agreeable to that.
Thank you, that, I think that would help.
Why would you do that? Because what that covers is not enclosed, that condition two talks about enclosing a space, but condition three talks about the odd tree or bush or whatever. They're different, aren't they? And if you take away the planting over 60 centimetres, that means that you could allow trees to be planted on the green space? Or not? Or not? Am I misreading it?
Thank you, Chair. No, that's a very good point you've raised. Yes, that does make sense, what you've said.
That was the point I was trying to make earlier. It's the words are tripping over each other.
I think in any event, I think having both of those there, I mean, as I say, in my reading of it, number three implies that you are allowed to plant a hedge, so long as, or anything else you want on that land, so long as it's not higher than 60 centimetres, which is only two feet. But nevertheless, it implies acceptance of a hedge. Whereas I think we are agreeing that if we granted the permission that we're being asked to grant, we definitely don't want it to change in any way. So I don't understand what we're saying, really.
Chairman, I think the two conditions, I think Verity to try and cover it, the two conditions are coming at it from different angles. Condition two is when your officers in planning are recommending to you. So what we're saying to you is that there should be no means of enclosure there, no residential structures, we've called it buildings, enclosures or boundary treatments. And what's happened is the Highway Authority have suggested, you know, without knowledge of that condition, probably their own condition, because they don't want to impede the visibility in terms of highway safety. And they're saying anything over 60 centimetres would be harmful. And we've just copied that over. And I think what Verity's saying is, yeah, in hindsight, we could probably take off their rider at the end. So what they're saying is that the highway visibility should be maintained at all times across the site. You know, full stop really, because it's a highway instruction. But in any event, condition two protects that from a planning visual point of view because we're removing that permitted development right.
I'm sorry to be awkward here, but I'm not happy about that. Because conditions two, to me, say no buildings, no boundaries to be built of any sort. Condition three is saying that no planting can go in the site above a 60-centimetre height. I would be unhappy, and am I wrong here, members, in taking out the last sentence? Because that means, if you say, condition two, highway visibility should be maintained across the site, you could argue that by putting one tree doesn't stop highway visibility. And what the Highways Authority were saying is they don't want to see any planting on that site above 60 centimetres.
Chair, if I may. We're being told that the applicants don't want to change what they have at all, they just want to be more confident that they have the right to maintain it as it is. So I think that we need to, for our own confidence that that is the case, should we go ahead and give them this planning permission, have conditions which are absolutely solid on keeping that piece of land exactly as it is. And so I think anything that implies that any sort of planting is allowed on that site other than the grass that's already there should be against the planning conditions that we are agreeing.
Yes, I mean, we have the assurance from the current owners, but once you give permission for something, that doesn't stop future owners doing it. And councillor Horrell brought that point up. Shall we, are we, would it be in order or unreasonable to say there shouldn't be any planting on the site? Just ignore the 60 centimetres?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm happy to make that amendment if members feel that's necessary.
Members?
Thank you.
I would agree with that, Chair.
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
I'm proposing that there should be no planting on the site. And so I'll probably need a second of that.
I'll second that, Chair.
Is that in agreement with the committee?
Yes.
Agreed.
Yeah, agreed.
So we're still asking questions of the case officer. Any more questions, Vice Chair?
Councillor Leaming had a question, but I think it's been covered. So unless he wants to come back, I think we're done.
No, no, I was just going to suggest there was going to be no planting, so we've just covered that.
Just done that, thank you.
So I think we're in debate. Any contributions to debate?
Chair, we have councillor Reed, we have councillor Leaming, we have councillor Gordon Smith and maybe me later. Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. This is probably the most complicated application today and one that I've taken for a long time. We are, we can see what's happening on the ground. We can see where it's possibly going. I just feel hesitant. I would, I'm not in a position where I can say that I will be voting in favour with the recommendation. I would like to hear from my fellow colleagues as to how they view the situation as well. Thank you.
Councillor Leaming?
Thank you, Chair. I do know this particular area quite well, as I used that road coming back from Sparshot College on many occasions after collecting my daughter from college. It is a conservation area, it's a heritage area. It is extremely narrow at that particular lane. This particular property is on a corner. I think that if we allow this to go ahead, we're setting a precedent, not only for this village, but for many other villages all over Winchester District. I don't feel comfortable with this at all. So I shall not be going along with the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor McLean.
Oops, thank you, thank you, Chair. Like other members here, I'm having an awful lot of problems with this. To retain it looking as good as it does, the applicant is breaking the law. So to not break the law, we've got to allow this to happen, which we've been told by Mr Colhane. We have, as we've a couple of times today, when we've been talking about retrospective applications, we should have the strength of our convictions that the conditions that we set are strong enough. If the conditions that we set are not strong enough, we've got to go back and again look at the conditions that we're setting to find out if they're the right ones. I'll be, again, brutally frank with you, I am struggling to understand the application. It's the first time I've seen one like it. And all I can rely on is the advice that we're being given by the officers and the information we've been given by Mr Colhearn to try and make a judgement on. And I am, I'm still going to have to listen to what other members say before I arrive with a conclusion that I'm happy with. Or do we obey it, give it some thought and come back at another committee meeting later, possibly, when we understand it a bit better? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Well, I'm quite surprised we're debating this. I mean, it's a public asset and we seem to be giving it into private ownership. I mean, I think that used to be known as a land grab or a land enclosure. And to me, obviously, that's probably outside of, the moral issues are probably outside of planning reasons. But it seems to me that all these open spaces alongside the verges contribute to the visual amenity of the village. They're not all listed separately in the village design statement. And we saw how earlier on in Colden Common, not every space is necessarily listed and valued, but the collective whole has an overall effect. And I think we need to protect that. And it seemed to me to be good visual amenity reasons to turn down the proposal. I know we can't make a judgement about the ulterior motives and so on. But, I mean, there are lots of people who look after a verge or pick up litter outside their house or indeed sweep the gutter outside West Street, outside my own house, without expecting necessarily any reward or anything like that. So I would vote against this.
Yeah, I too couldn't possibly vote for this. I mean, this is a public amenity space. It would then, voting for it would be a loss of public amenity. We've heard from the ward councillors against the village design statement and we've heard from a resident. And if people are breaking the law by mowing their verges, highway verges, then probably all of Sparshot is breaking the law because it's a very well-kept village. And we've heard from the parish councils that they encourage people to cut their verges. And then the parish council is very strongly against it. There are no footpaths or pavements. So, and the road is really narrow. I mean, we struggled when we drove around with cars coming the other way. So it does give people a knock-out to leap onto something for safety if they need to. So I think there's a safety issue. And I don't know what else is in the background. And, you know, we're quite right to be reminded that we shouldn't consider future use. But it does, it could possibly then be a technical point which would lead on to something. And then even if the current owners don't wish to do that, and that's what Mr Colhane is telling us, we are changing the status of that land. And there's all sorts of issues, like it's a sort of important green space, it does actually go around the corner. So what happens to the bit around the corner? So I'm not too sure how we're going to hang the planning reasons to refuse it, if that's what we're going to do. But I couldn't possibly vote to approve this application. Councillor Rutter, did you want to say anything?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Raphael and councillor Cleer first, and then I'll have my six minutes. Thank you.
Councillor Raphael?
Thank you, Chair. I think we're missing the point here. We're giving away public land or trying to. Why would we do that? And if Mr and Mrs Conroy mow the thing now, why won't they continue to mow it? If they don't want to do it, fine, we'll find somebody else to do it. But the land has to stay in public ownership. So I should vote against it.
Thank you, councillor Cleer.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I never thought we'd be, and I'm not wish to be rude, be spending all this time over this. I agree with previous speakers, it has to stay as it is. I do not understand really the logic behind this application. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, of course we don't. But after spending many years, like me, cutting a grass verge, and obviously I've been doing it against the law all these years, why you just suddenly want to, I'm sorry, but it's got to stay as it is. So I'm voting against this application.
Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. What I've been struggling with is the planning reasons for turning this down. And I'm hoping our officers can give us strength in our elbows. I'm extremely uncomfortable with this application and I respect and hear the concerns of the parish council. Whilst I agree with other councillors that we appreciate the householders kept the verge in good condition. And we certainly don't want it to become a car park or a churned-up verge like so many become if they're used as car parking areas. I can't see the point or the advantage to the residents other than possible development opportunities in the future. But that, of course, is not the application in front of us. If, I think that we probably have enough strength in the conservation area and the impact on the residential amenity for the whole of the village of a change of use of this piece of land as our planning reasons to refuse it. I'm also concerned that the county hasn't objected, that seems bizarre to me. So, and I think it would be a very dangerous precedent to set, particularly in a conservation area. So I am afraid I agree with our Chair and other members that I won't be able to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've all spoken. And we'd just like to stress that nobody is accusing the applicants of anything. It's just that it's the change of use from a public space to a private space, which is what I think the committee are objecting to.
Chair, councillor McLean would like to ask for a point of clarification.
Councillor McLean, your second go.
Thank you, bless you, Chair. We're talking about, and I just, this is why I need the clarification on it, we're talking about the, I've lost it again. It's the, it becoming ancillary to the main dwelling. But does that mean the ownership changes hands? Or is it just the use of it? I think Fiona probably on this.
Chair, just to be clear, that the application is about a change of use of the land to ancillary residential, which is in effect garden land for all intents and purposes. It does not affect ownership. Ownership is not a material planning consideration, as I've said earlier. So that's, you are purely looking today at the use of the land and the conditions that are suggested. And I might add that the conditions are intended to retain the land largely as it is at the moment.
Yeah, it's just the reason for the point of clarification, a number of people are talking about it possibly being developed in all sorts of other things. But my understanding about, from what you've just said and what Mr Colhearn just said, is that if the ownership remains with the Hampshire, albeit that the use, ancillary use becomes part of the property, they still don't have the right to develop anything and can't have.
Chair, I think you're in danger of confusing ownership with the highway rights that exist over the land.
I think I am, quite definitely.
And Mr Colhane said is the land is actually owned by these applicants, but that there are highway rights over the land, which would have to be extinguished before any change of use could take place. So it's not about ownership, it's about the highway rights over the land and how the land, what the change of use is for, under this planning application.
Thank you, that clarifies it.
Okay, thank you. Julie, I see you on my screen, do you want to speak?
Yes, please, Chairman, thank you. I did just want to, before you go to the vote, I did want to say, well, I think one of the members said, you know, they'd look perhaps to your officers to assist you in a reason for refusal. I haven't heard anything, Chairman, that could assist in a reason for refusal at this stage in terms of identifying planning harm. And I think Miss Sutherland has just explained to you that land ownership isn't a material consideration in this case. So the question you're being asked to consider is the change of use from land which has highway rights over it to extended residential curtilage. And with the conditions we're recommending, Chair, I don't see that we could substantiate a reason for refusal. And I'm struggling to find a policy in the local plan that would assist with that. And I do want members to know that before you take a vote. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, can I just ask? I'm getting brain dumped. Mrs Pinnock, can you just repeat the first part of what you said, just to get my head around it? About what we can and can't do?
I think, Chair, I already can't remember quite what I said. I think, Chair, what I'm trying to say is that actually, the job at hand is to consider whether the change of use of this land from land that has highway rights over it to an extended part of someone's garden is acceptable in planning terms or not. That's what we're being asked to consider today, not any land ownership or anything else. It's just whether changing the use of this land from land that has highway rights over it as to become someone's extended garden is acceptable in planning terms or not. And given the conditions we're recommending to you, I'm satisfied that that can be adequately mitigated and it won't be enclosed or changed in an unsatisfactory way and actually visually will look the same. And therefore, your officers are struggling to identify any planning harm that warrant a reason for refusal.
I'm sorry to butt in, but we appear to have lost Therese.
Yes, I've noticed that, councillor Cleer. Can we just hold for a moment? We'll try to get her back into the meeting. Thank you.
Just to let anybody listening know, we have a slight technical hitch with a key member of the committee who has communication difficulties at the moment. I don't think it will affect this application unless we can't get her back. So if you could just bear with us for a couple of minutes, thank you. We really should have some background music we can play or something.
Please don't whistle.
Councillor Reed? You want to make a comment? No?
Do you want, do you want me to do this while Therese is not there? Or are you taking over the chair?
Well, I'm just holding forth, shall we say, for now.
The question is that if...
I don't think we should have any more questions or debate until we're either sure, councillor.
Right, I am, but I missed what Julie said. Have I missed anything? Have I missed the vote or?
No, 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 we haven't. We were waiting for your return, councillor Evans, and perhaps...
I don't know what happened because I was still live and everyone else wasn't. And so I missed what Julie had to say because you couldn't just repeat that very quickly, Julie.
Just go back.
Chair, can you just hold for a moment? And then we can get Julie back on to the microphone in a second.
Councillor Reed, did you want to say something in the meantime?
Well, I can do. I think this is where the problem lies. According to Nick, the land only has access rights over by the Highway Authority. But the land is in the retention of the owner of the land, of the owner of the Mount View. And is that correct? So I can't really see the reasonable reasoning for this application, to be quite honest.
I think the advice we were given by Mr Carlhein was to a spade's depth.
Yes, I know that we own the land to the middle of the highway. But yeah, I told you it was a difficult one.
Chair, my time is up. Chair, my time is up. But it's not a matter for the committee to speculate as to the reasons for the application, that you should be looking at the application as a planning application for a change of use, subject to those conditions. And really, as you've been told before, that it isn't really about what might happen in the future and even the reasons for this application. It is simply the application from a planning perspective. Thank you.
Jane, would you like to finish off chairing this? Because I sort of cut out. I just need Fiona to tell me whether I missed anything vital.
Chair, I'm not sure which point you cut out. I don't know whether you heard all of what Julie said or just...
No, I didn't hear what Julie said.
Didn't hear anything of it. It may be that Julie can repeat what she said, actually. If she's there.
Yes, Chair, I am here. I'm happy to have another go at saying what I've said already, which the other members have heard. What I was saying, Chair, was that the application before us, and Fiona was just saying this, is actually a change of use from a piece of land that has highway rights over it to a piece of land that would extend someone's residential curtilage and they'd be able to use it ancillary residential use. Nothing more, nothing less. The land ownership is immaterial. Anything else is immaterial. What we're looking at is whether the use of this land as someone's extended ancillary residential land is acceptable or not in planning terms. And with the conditions your officers are proposing, I'm satisfied that there'd be no visual material change that would warrant a reason for refusal at this site, Chair. And your offices, what I've said earlier was your offices. I'm struggling, Chair, to find a policy that would substantiate a reason for refusal on this change of use. And that was what I was saying, Chair, I think, just before you cut out. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, sorry, what were you saying?
Jane, do you want to carry on? Vice Chair, do you want to carry on chairing the meeting?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Reed, you have your hand up. Would you like to make a comment?
Sorry, Chair, I got tired and left it up there for a change. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, well, I think at this stage we need to go to the vote. Unless anybody's got any more legal questions for our officers or any more points of clarification? No? Okay. So can we go to the vote, please? Dave, if you'd like to take the usual role call, thank you. Oh, and if you vote, this is recommended for approval. So it's for approval, against approval or abstain. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. First of all, councillor Cleer?
I'm going to stick to my guns against.
Councillor Evans?
Against.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Against.
Councillor Lanning?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
Councillor McLean, are you there?
Councillor McLean?
Oh dear.
I shall, I'll come back to councillor McLean in a moment. Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Raphael?
Against.
And councillor Rutter?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
I think we've lost him. Okay.
Councillor McLean, try once more, Chair.
Oh, there we go.
Councillor McLean?
Against.
Thank you.
Sorry, my button wouldn't operate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, just to conclude then. That's all, members, against.
Okay, members, so we need to come up with some planning reasons for our decision to refuse this application. My point of view is that it's against, as opposed to the documents say that mention the Sparsholt VDS and Sparsholt Conservation Area appraisal. And I think that I would agree with the parish council that this is against those two documents, those planning advisory documents. But can members also come up with planning reasons for their votes, please?
DM 15 on green spaces.
One at a time, please. There we'll have councillor Raphael first.
I said DM 15, open green spaces. It says, open areas and green spaces that contribute to special qualities. And I think this contributes to special qualities.
DM 15, thank you. And councillor Reed?
The same, basically.
Okay, any advance on DM 15?
No, I would go along, if I may, with DM 15. And you've got to recognize that it is a public asset.
Right. Thank you. Miss Pinnock, are we getting anywhere near something that our officers can support?
No, I'm afraid not at the moment. I've heard, you know, I've heard through, obviously, the public speakers questioning and debate about members' concerns about the loss of public benefit. But that, in this regard, it's highway land which would become garden. And I'm struggling to find a reason for refusal on that in visual harm terms. I've heard contrary to the Sparsholt Village Design Statement, but visually it would remain the same. So I'm struggling to identify planning harm as a result of that. Similarly, from the conservation areas, the wider conservation area situation, I'm struggling to identify harm because there'll be no visual change. DM 15, councillor Raphael kindly read out about loss of open green spaces. Well, it wouldn't be lost. It would be here as a space that's, and therefore struggling to find a reason for refusal on that, Chair, the Vice Chair as well. So what I need, what would help me is if members could identify the actual visual planning harm to the character of the conservation area and distinctive qualities of this part of Sparsholt.
Right, well, I think we, I think because it's public highway and a distinctive and unique local habitat, which is threatened by this change of use. And I think that, is there anything in the parish council's document that we can use? Councillor Gordon?
Wouldn't vary anything on a right of way. You have a right of passage over that land at the moment, which could be extinguished in the future under the tort of trespass.
So it will, it will impact on the current usage of the land, potentially, by local residents. So it will affect their amenity.
It will lose, as I said, surely, the recognized public access. Can that come in anywhere?
I think, I think that was what councillor Gordon Smith was articulating.
Yes, people have a right, have a right to pass over land to public highway.
So it's the loss of, the loss of public rights. Yes, Mrs Sutherland, you've got a contribution to make, thank you.
What I would say is that the loss of public rights wouldn't happen until the highway rights were extinguished. And that is a matter of why the, an application under the Highways Act was subsequently under the Town and Country Planning Act under section seven. So that isn't decided by this planning application. That will be decided by subsequent processes.
But those subsequent processes wouldn't be allowed to even be considered if this application is not approved?
No, but those...
So this is a gateway to that?
Those processes will consider the rights or the loss of the highway rights over the land. Won't consider the change, you're considering just the change of use, but those subsequent processes will look at the highway extinguishment. For that, but that's not really a planning matter.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Evans, you have a contribution?
Yes, I do. The, this would, granting permission for this would, just really just what you've just said, but would allow the next step towards section 247, which is not what the community wants. So, and nor does, nor does the committee, by the way. So is that valid?
Chairman, I don't think so, because people would have the right at that stage to make representations on those extinguishments. And that's not a matter that we're here considering today. I think, you know, appreciation is really quite tricky. And that's why I listened very carefully while you were debating and obviously moving forward with the recommendation and a decision to refuse. And I think what we've got to be very careful of is that we, that, you know, we work together to find a reason for refusal that can be substantiated in the event of an appeal. And we have to identify planning harm to do that. And we have to identify something that's contrary to our policies.
Councillor Evans? And then councillor Cleer?
Can I come back with? I wrote down that someone, I think Fiona told us, that all we can consider is the use of the land and whether the conditions are appropriate. And we've had a go at the conditions, but now we're on the use of the land. Now, I think there is planning harm if the use of the land changes because it removes it from a public asset to a residential amenity. That's actually in the description, isn't it? An ancillary amenity land.
And we need to identify the harm of that.
But there is planning harm in this piece of land, which is available to the public as a public asset, changing to an ancillary amenity land.
Thank you, councillor Evans. Councillor Cleer?
Well, I might be going in the dark here, but to me, there's no identified need for this to be taken out of the use that it is at the moment and going into an owner's ownership by people. What's the need? I mean, it's just that they want it. Oh, well, I don't know. I don't know.
Sorry, sorry, councillor Cleer, that the need or the reason why, I think Fiona did say earlier, isn't a matter we can consider. And I know we've tried to understand that because we all thought that might help us and come to a conclusion. But we haven't heard those reasons why, but actually it isn't a material consideration. I think, Chairman, if I could advise Chair, if I could perhaps wrap up. And I know that, you know, it's a tricky one. If I read you out something that I've written, but I've got to tell you, I think it's, you know, it is difficult. I've written, "The change of use affords to respect the qualities, features and characteristics which contribute to the distinctiveness of this part of the Sparsholt Conservation Area. The loss of this highway land results in harm to the public benefit and is therefore contrary to policies DM 15, 16, and possibly DM 27, which talks about conservation areas and the Sparsholt Village Design Statement and Conservation Area, Conservation Appraisal." But I have to say, I'm still struggling to sort of add the normal rider that we would add on there, and the harm is, because actually visually it won't change. But I think, you know, that's really the best I can do for you based on what I've heard, Chairman. And I'd be happy to hear from members or Fiona Sutherland again, if you think that's a substantiable, a reason for refusal that we could sustain. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Julie. I'm sure that members appreciate that suggestion. Councillor Reed, did you want to make another contribution?
Well, all I was going to say, and I think whether Fiona was going to step in after Julie, that I would support what Julie has actually just put forward.
Thank you. Fiona, did you want to make a contribution at this stage?
No, I don't think I've got anything to add to Julie's suggestion.
Thank you. Right, so we need to go to a vote again on the basis of these reasons for refusal. Dave, if you'd like to go through the members again for their votes. And the proposal is now to refuse.
I thought councillor McLean wanted to just make another contribution as well. Before we take a vote.
Sorry, Dave, thank you. Councillor McLean, did you have another contribution?
I hope it's a contribution. It's a difficult one. The problem I've been sitting, and I'm sort of brewing over this in my mind, trying to get my head around it, is that we should be having, there should be somebody here from Hampshire County Council, Hampshire Highways, Hampshire, an office in Hampshire somewhere, that we can ask these questions of as well. And for whatever reason, Winchester City Council is making a planning decision for land that is in the control of Hampshire County Council. That if we go the wrong way with this, we're about to give Hampshire County Council's land away to someone else. Now, I just see somebody...
I think we've already established that there's no giving away of land being discussed.
I think, you know, we're giving away the, okay, I will slightly rephrase.
The highway rights.
We are giving away the highway rights to someone else. And whether we have the right in planning terms or not to do that, that is my worry. Thank you.
Chairman, if we could just assist...
Not the case. Sorry, Julie.
Yeah, no, sorry, Chair. If I could just assist and say, the planning is land use based. It's not about land ownership. Anyone can make a planning application to apply for anything on anyone's land, subject to serving the right ownership declarations, as we heard on an earlier application today. So all we can consider is the material change of use of this land from one use to another. Now, if other, other measures, i.e. section 247, we heard of the Town and Country Planning Act, and other highway rights aren't extinguished, then the use can't, the change of use can't occur. And that does happen in planning terms. So we're not giving anything away. We're granting, or we, you obviously voted against that sign. The application was to change the use of the land. And then there are other steps that the applicant and other people, the county council and others, would take to decide if that was acceptable or not, Chair. And this is just a process that the applicant is going through in this order. And we're a stage within that. But we can't consider those land use, ownership rights or any other factors outside of our planning role.
Thank you very much. I think we are agreed that the change of land use as proposed is not acceptable. But let's have that vote now, Dave, if you could just take the roll call, please. So this is to refuse this application on the grounds that...
Given by Mrs Pinnock.
Yes.
Yes, um, thank you, first of all, councillor Cleer?
Uh, yes, still refusing.
Sorry, Chair, are we agreeing to those reasons for refusal?
We are agreeing to those reasons for refusal.
So if you agree...
So if you vote for, if you vote for, then you're for refusing the application. Thank you, sorry, Dave, carry on.
Sorry.
Do you like me to read it out again before you now vote on it?
Yes, please, Mrs Pinnock, thank you.
Thank you, just so as it's clearing your mind what, how you take your vote then. So, "The change of use fails to respect the qualities, features and characteristics which contribute to the distinctiveness of this part of the Sparsholts Conservation Area. The loss of this highway land results in harm to the public benefit and is therefore contrary to policies DM fifteen, DM sixteen, DM seventeen and the Sparsholts Village Design Statement and Conservation Area appraisal." Thank you, Chair.
Councillor McLean, your microphone is still on, if you could just switch that off for now. Thank you, Dave, I think on that basis, if we could go ahead with the roll call, please. If you vote for, you are agreeing with those reasons for refusal. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that clarity. Um, I'll start again, councillor Cleer?
For.
Councillor Evans?
For. For.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
For.
Councillor Laming?
For.
Councillor McLean?
For.
Councillor Reed?
For.
Councillor Ruffel?
For.
And councillor Rutter?
For.
Okay, that's all eight members, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe that's the end of today's formal agenda, so if you would... Thank you very much, everybody, we've been a difficult, interesting planning committee today. Uh, if we could switch off the recording, please. And the initial, the all members of the public are no longer with us. And I'll hand back over to councillor Evans to chair.